Will everyone please rise and pledge allegiance? As preliminary matter, this is Jeff Swanberg, Chair of the Select Board. Good evening. This open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted via Zoom. And in person, speakers on the agenda will be participating remotely, and the Chair may allow for the public to provide comment. If the Select Board would like to hear public comments, and if there's further action required by the Board, the Chair will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the Board may, if we are able to, within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast to individual attendees unless otherwise required by law. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, so please take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on board docs, and we'd recommend that members of the public follow the agenda as posted on board docs unless I note otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or emotions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. Writers of public comment, after members have spoken, the Chair may afford public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Public comment for public hearings will only be accepted in person and per open meeting law. Let us now turn to the first item on our agenda, which is public comments. We would like to hear public comments, and if further action is required by the Board, I will add the matter as appropriate to a forthcoming agenda. Depending on the comment, the Board may, if we're able to, within the confines of open meeting law, respond with information as opposed to needing to deliberate on the matter. So I will start with individuals in the room. Is there anybody in the room tonight who would like to offer public comment? All right. Is there anybody online this evening who would like to offer public comment? All right, very good. We will now turn to item four on board docs, which is the consent agenda. There are six items on the consent agenda. Any questions on any of the six items? We do have an invitation for a Court of Honor on June fourth. Is anybody? I have not checked my calendar, so I'm not sure I believe I can make that, but if anybody else would like to go?
Okay.
It's Sunday the fourth. I will be there, but I don't have to be there as a member or others want to, but but I will be there. So if someone else wants to, it's more than welcome, but if not, I'm happy to go.
Okay. All right. Well, we got at least one person who will be there. Good. No, it's it's nice for us to have presence. Great. All right. Any other questions on the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through F as presented contingent upon appearing for all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidance. Authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor? Very good. Motion passes, and congratulations to both the Gold Award winners and the Eagle Scout. Proclamation as well.
And I know, so I think Andrea, are you here for the?
I'm here for Memorial Day and then barrel here for.
Yes, so that was, so we've just approved it all. So that's it.
It's consent. If it's the same plans from previous, so.
You have to, you have to stay to the end though.
Well, I do have one question. Would it be possible if we, we have a barrel and we burn it just one single flag?
Well, I would, I would say yes, but just check with. As long as they're okay with it, we're okay. Yeah, that's been in the past.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So it's good. Thank you for doing it. They have organized.
Absolutely. Have a good evening. All right, we are moving on to item five, which is a request for the use of town property pro park by the Imago School, and this one is a new usage, which is why it's not on the consent agenda, if I'm not mistaken. Do you, Greg, do you want to fill us in on what the request is? Because this was a revision to the agenda.
So we did just get to discuss probably that model school to use pro part two seconds. And now I appreciate on behalf of the most that they appreciate the force consideration of this application. Because we just just got it and it before didn't seem to night. They wouldn't miss out on it because the next regular schedule for me is until the sixth June, that would be after this event. So based on the application that I'm reading on board docs, they wanted you to for their physical education class, particularly softball. And the afternoon of of June second, which I think is a Friday, so.
And nobody else is using the park at that time? Any questions on the request to use crow park? Pretty cut and dry here. All right. I'll entertain a motion.
But I'll go school for physical education on Friday, June second, twenty twenty three, from one o'clock to three o'clock again. Contingent upon adhering to all federal, state, and local public health and safety guidelines.
All in favor? All right, very good. Was anybody here from the school? I didn't even stop in back. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to say anything about the use? We just approved it here.
Okay, who, who are you? You're in the van. That's amazing. Good.
All right, great. Well, enjoy use of the crow park.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to item six. We have two items. A is a opening on the Council on Aging Board, and we have Mary Ann Shields, who has submitted an application, which is here on board docs. And are you, are you Mary Ann Shields? And would you like to speak on? Yes. Okay, great. We've had a chance to read your application, but just for the public right here, would you just kind of give us a very brief overview of your background and why you're interested in the position?
Which is, I thrive on useful work. And in looking around at places where I could volunteer, I really wanted to become involved with this community. We chose to move to Maynard. From Indianapolis, when my husband retired, and we had five unexpected grandchildren show up and tell me anything. And so two second twins and a single mom. So in choosing our community, this seemed like a place where people actually participate in government. That doesn't happen a lot in the Midwest. They have that family. We vote and that's it. And it seemed like it'd be a wonderful place where we could enjoy the things that we enjoy with people that we would enjoy. And make some use of some of our talents. My career, my last career was in fundraising and development. I was a nonprofit executive. And specialized in fundraising for small organizations that had difficulty. For instance, psychiatric hospitals for teenagers. A university library that only gets to ask the alumni for money after all the departments in college have not been able to get any from them. So I'm, I'm used to help. And this is a small town. You can get to know people, you can get to know what the problems are, you can get to know what the benefits of living in a small town are and basically. So it seems to me like this would be a place to volunteer. Landed with the council on aging because Hank Brown invited me to a tour. And I found out what was going on. And then Dan and I went and talked with Amy at the center and were very impressed program that we saw going on. Their constraints, yes, but I think that it's manageable. I think the future is very bright for the council on aging. There are many, many lovely ideas floating around it. And many of them are things that people are already hard at work at. And if I can add to that with my background, I think that that would be very pleasing to me and helpful to you.
Very nice. Amy, did you have anything to add?
I, I'm so excited. I haven't been so excited. The day I met Mary Ann was, was a happy day. I've been hoping for an immediate sense of partnership in possibility and leadership for the management board, my board members, my current board members are very excited about having Mary Ann join us. We have I, I can say that her experience, her background, the fresh ideas that it brings me through what we have on the table now and your teacher. Just an incredible asset. I'm still, I'm totally still.
Very good. Any questions from the Board?
No, I think it's amazing job. Thank you.
Yes, and and again, just for the members of public, we've had a chance to read even more from the application. So thank you for putting a good thorough filling out there. At some point, I would love to get your impressions on the town meeting format and all its uniqueness. I'm always interested in when somebody from outside of New England thinks about about our our structure, but we we can save that for another night. If there's no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Mary Ann Shields for the council on aging board with the term expiring of June thirty, explained for authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor? Thank you and good luck. Item B is an appointment for the Housing Authority Board Member. And we had heard from two individuals at our last meeting and decided to wait until this meeting to see if we wanted to make an appointment. So let me check in with the Board and see how we feel about this appointment today. Thoughts on who we would like to appoint?
My question is that, though, I don't believe the this year.
I don't believe so, no.
I do have a question and Richard, can I ask?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I just have a question, and it's it's something that kind of came to me after we had the meeting a couple of weeks ago. You know, I know that what I know about being on a board is that there are a lot of people who come to you, and you said you kind of are if people come to you to help you, you know, ask about solving problems and things like that. And sometimes on a board we can't, we can't do what we want. And I'm just wondering if that is going to be an issue of like not being able to help the people the way you want to help them, but that you have to work within the
Well, the thing is, if they come to me or I would first go to the director.
Yeah.
And explain what the situation was.
Right, right, right.
And after that, we would try to work out the problem. I would then go back to the person if it was impossible. We just sort of explain.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
Nothing we can do.
Right, right. Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure, because I know sometimes, you know, boards, especially one like the Housing Authority where there's a lot of people, and there's a lot of, you know, a lot of different constraints and and rules and things like that. Sometimes you might not be able to do what you want to do, and sometimes it can be a little frustrating.
Any tenant would go to the Director of Housing first.
Okay, yeah.
If they don't get any satisfaction from them, they can come to one of the housing members. We did discuss it at one of the housing meetings.
Yeah.
And either solve the problem or just turn around and say, you know, it's beyond our control. Nothing we can go.
Yeah.
And apologize for that.
Okay, no, that's great.
I'll, I'll note that Mr. Marcy has worked for the Housing Authority before, and that is one advantage of familiarity with the system.
I don't know how long he is actually. If I were to make a motion, I would, I would move on behalf of Mr. Greenway. And one important aspects of of what I think is needed in on the housing board is a recognition that it's not just the individuals housing group. You know, the gentleman last week spoke about how he wanted flowers, but he spoke specifically, you know, spoke specifically about his location. He went to a meeting because of his concern at that particular location. And I, I, while, while I certainly applaud that and appreciate that, I think being on the housing board is needs to be reflective of all, where we have three different housing units for for Maynard that all need to be recognized and appreciated and whatever. And I, I, I get the sense that Mr. Greenway has a broader recognition and understanding of the you know, of the fact that we have a multiple groups of people, not just a group of people that are living in his particular neighborhood.
All right. Chris or Justine?
That's okay with me. That makes perfect sense.
Would you like to make a motion, David?
Yeah, I would move to appoint Richard Greenway to the Housing Authority Board for the term to start July one, twenty twenty three and to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty eight, if you can believe that. Authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Thank you very much.
Does he have to get sworn in?
Before.
Yeah, yeah. What's that? Are you, are you familiar with the clerk's office?
Yes.
Here, so if you had opportunity at their window open, could you swing by?
I want to take the old.
Yeah, that's right. And then I'm here with some training. Go off and do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll take care of that tomorrow.
Great. And I'll follow up with an email anyway.
What's that?
I'll follow up with an email to you in the morning.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Good morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item seven, we have a revision for a liquor license for the for the co-op, for the Asbit Village Food Co-op. This is a license we already approved. This is just a revision to that. I think they needed a revision due to requests from the state. Other details, or could I just go to them?
No, you can go to Sam, but just to clarify, for the clarification, you're, you're right, this chair specifically is the change of officers and and the layout. I guess there was some clarification as to the layout specific to the deck that's located on the outside. Sam can probably clarify. Sam, can you introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Sam McCormick. I'm the general manager at Asbit Co-op Market.
You're off of mute, but we still can't hear you.
That might be on our end.
How about now?
Hold on, hold on. Could somebody else online say something just so we can test if it's, who's in this one?
This is John Liverso on the board.
I think this is on our end. You're probably okay.
Sam, can you try one more time?
Hello there.
Oh, no.
Can you hear me? No.
They're up.
We can hear you.
We saw this last night.
All right, can you hear me now? Nope, hold on. Hello, 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 hello.
We're trusting, go ahead, Sam.
Hello there. Can you all hear me?
We're gonna ask you to hold up paper.
No, no success?
We got you. We got you. All right, very good.
Oh, okay, great.
All right, now, could you, could you please give us a view on what the revision to, first of all, how are things going at the co-op?
They're, they're very busy. I appreciate you all making time to put us back on the agenda. And we're working really hard to get all of our permits and licenses in place. We could try to open before the end of the month. And that's a tough timeline, but we're working hard on that. And for the record, I'm Sam McCormick with Asbit Co-op Market. I'm the general manager here at eighty-six Cotter Mill Road in Maynard. So the, yes, the, the notes on this particular reapplication, we had a positive inspection from a state inspector, and there were two requests. One was because we had a recent update to our Board of Directors due to our annual meeting with the co-op. The inspector requested that we just update the application since it's in the stage it's in. It's much easier to do this now than to do it after the new board was officially, you know, through their first business meeting, it would require completely separate application. And then secondly, regarding the space, they just clarified since we are currently applying for only a package sale for off off-site consumption, that the deck is not a portion of this application, only the interior of the grocery store is. And that's where we reflected in the application update, that the square footage reflects what our lease has, which is eighty-five fifty-five square feet interior. And that includes our grocery space and our back stacking kitchens. So that is the, the two specific updates that were requested. We also had our new Board of Directors repeat query form updates, and we also had a resigning of all the documentation related to the application from our Board Chair, and it was witnessed by our Board Secretary and Twitter. So those are the substantive updates that I have right now for that.
Any questions from the Board?
No.
Okay, then I will entertain. There are two motions here. I just had a question. The second one, there's a comment from the Health Department. Did we move the motion as is, or should we say subject to?
That's the one, yeah.
Yeah, this is on B, the Victor and Entertainment License.
That's fine. I, yeah, I, you can, you can do the contingent upon the word else. Oh, cool.
Okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion on A first.
Move to accept and approve the revised section fifteen package store wines and malt beverages license application for the Asbit Village Food Cooperative Incorporated DVA Asbit Co-op Market at eighty-six Cotter Mill Road, authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
All in favor? Very good. And now this is this is, this is, this is a new, this is not the, the first one was revision. So this is the new, just the, just the common Vic license that they'll need for.
Yes, I want to clarify, I, you know, so the Board of Health has kind of separate regulations that they buy by separate from the like in order to fail certain passive board accounts of regulations. So you're allowing them to serve food if they pass all.
Okay, so we don't need any sort of revision. We can do it as is.
They can't do it.
Yep, got it. All right, so any, any questions on the common Vic license? For the Asbit Co-op? All right, then I'll entertain a motion.
Move for approval color control and entertainment license for the Asbit Village Food Cooperative Inc., eighty-six Cotter Mill Road, in your mass, authorizing the use of digital signatures if approved.
All in, oh, second. All in favor? All right. Good luck with the, all the work between now and opening.
Thank you all so much. We really appreciate the time and the responsibility, and and good luck for the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Have a good evening. Okay, item eight has been removed from the agenda. We may see that at a later date, so we're going to go on to item nine. We have two contracts. In nineteen row for some of them. Good evening.
Good evening. Justin DiMarco, Pub Works Director. How's it going?
Uh, we're good. A little tired, but doing all right.
That's good.
Yeah, so two contracts. First one is for the sewer collection system.
Yes, so sewer collection system contract. As previously mentioned in a number of our sewer enterprise conversations, when we're talking about budget development, we have a line item that refers to a permit that we are required to do, which is called infiltration and inflow in our collection system. For those who don't truly understand sewer collection systems, they are a segment grid of pipes and sewers typically gravity, meaning it's pumped up and then it gravities down. These pipes tend to over time degrade and misjoint. And groundwater infiltration can be detrimental to our wastewater treatment facilities overall capacity. So we are tasked by the Massachusetts Department of Public, excuse me, Department of Environmental Protection in studying, addressing, and repairing our pipes to reduce implosion and inflow in our system. The contract in front of you is an indication, we are in our third year of our permit process and planning process of a five-year window. Where we have action items and have found some significant infiltration areas specifically located adjacent to Florida Road New Bridge and downstream on Main Street. This contract represents a sewer relining of over, I want to say it's five hundred five hundred linear feet of let me rephrase that, six hundred and ten linear feet of existing ten, ten inch and twelve inch sewer pipe. And then five hundred and sixty-six linear feet of existing eight inch and fifteen inch sewer pipe for care and place liner. This is performed with minimum impact, no road openings. It is done through our manholes. It is a system of revitalization of our aging infrastructure downtown. The overall contract value represents the bid results of that scope of work. And as such, I'm also asking for authority to execute change orders, not to exceed match term loss twenty-five percent maximum for a total potential value of hundred eighty thousand four hundred fifty-six dollars and fifty cents. The funding mechanism is already built into our operating budget. It is a line item that is two hundred thousand dollars per year. This is something that will be pursued year on year, year on year, and this is something we're looking to execute prior to the end of this year.
Any questions on nine A?
Yeah, just curious, Justin, when you reline pipes, how much capacity do you lose?
Also, it's almost like a very, very thin layer of cement or and or PVC. The capacity results are less than ten percent reduction. But for the most part, typically, when we remove the infiltration and inflow, which is a large amount of water, we're bringing it back to its design capacity. So technically, they're overswelled right now, taking in a significant amount of groundwater.
You'd mentioned one of the areas is near Florida Rose, and a chance that the construction could have caused the damage, or is that?
No, it just happens. So it happens to be the downtown infrastructure, both water and sewer, and it's the oldest underground infrastructure based on the mill complex and its design standards and how the town was built up. So a large amount of our infrastructure failure and degradation to the extreme level is actually within our downtown area. You could say the bridges as well, and that's why the bridge is under repair, but none of that is impacted. So actually, the manhole right on the south of the post office is the start of Florida Road, moving down all the way past the bridge on Main Street to the New Grover area. It's all part of the refining process.
Any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the contract with Natural Water Mean Cleaning Company for the sewer collection system rehabilitation improvement project. In the amount of money, four thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars and fifty cents that was presented. And to authorize the town administrator to approve change orders that total less than twenty-five percent of the big contract amount. Authorizing use of digital signatures if approved.
Second.
All in favor? Very good. Item B is the gap three grant wastewater treatment facility.
All right, so this is, the Board may be aware that we received a grant award in January two thousand twenty-three for roughly eighty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars for the energy efficient upgrades to our wastewater treatment facility in our mechanical systems. What you have in front of you is the standard state contract and execution of award of those grants so that we can move on the project as a whole. And as you may, may recall at last night's annual town meeting, we also passed an article for retained earnings that was the matching aspect of this grant process so that we can move forward with the overall project. This is to guarantee our contract allowance with the state, and actually at a future agenda, probably either the next agenda or the agenda after, we will have a contract with the awarded vendor to execute those projects.
Any questions on nine B? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move to authorize the town administrator to approve the gap three grant contract with the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection for wastewater treatment facilities in the amount of eighty-nine thousand seventy-five dollars and authorizing Justin DiMarco to be the new director as an authorized signatory.
All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Uh, moving on to item ten, which is the disposition of one summer street, the old fire station. Uh, we put out an R F P and I believe those have now come in and I believe uh, Justine was our representative from the select board for that process and I believe we have. Uh, a few more as well. So Greg, do you want to give us an overview on how that went?
Yeah, it went very well. So excitingly, um. It came through last night, that coming uh, for the disposition for, for those of you who don't know crazy legal language, this position is the sale. So um. Coming allowed for the sale of the conversation, for the fire station and. In anticipation and hopes of that, um. Uh, you know, also due to consent of the select board, we conducted a procurement process called a request for proposals procedure where we solicited three. And I'm sorry, we ended up only getting three, but we solicited proposals from the greater public and uh. The board also consented to the use of a uh, private commercial real estate broker and it was O'Brien uh, Corporate Properties. Um, who's actually welcome, uh, is joining us tonight, Luke uh, and Rob from O'Brien. And um, so we had, I've been looking at my notes, but I think we had over thirty registrants. Registrants from uh, the, to, to receive the R P, which is exciting. And um, the two of them, uh, I mean, Luke and Rob um, showed. I'm, I've lost in my memo, but something like twelve or thirteen different um, showings. Um, which is, oh, thirteen tours. I know I've caught it now, which is also very good. And then um. The deadline was extended by a week at the, at the advice of O'Brien um, Corporate Properties. Um, to try to make sure that we had enough uh, proposals and we ended up getting three. So um, as a chief of Cameron officer, I, I assembled a evaluation team. It was myself, it was Donna Dodson, John Kramer, Justin St. John. And um, and then the president was also Luke and Rob. And um, we abided by the evaluation criteria outlined in the R P and we graded them according. So of the three proposals, um, the highest score was Black Rock Galleries. Uh, headquarters, they headquartered out of Fairfield, Connecticut. Uh, my understanding is uh, their business is. The uh, online sales, uh, like an auction house. And so they have uh, different branches in the northeast. That they, that they can wear. Um, I believe people can come visit the wares, but I think they do their, their transactions online. Um, so their proposal is to, is to convert the old fire station to a mixed use, but keep the envelope larger than the same. There's a whole picture and sort of like renders in the, in the proposal, which I uploaded to board ducks that the public is curious. And um, so the fourth floor, uh, my understanding is to be partly retail and partially the warehouse and then the second floor to be converted into. Into residence. Um, and so the, the, the working group that we got together, um, um. Endorses recommendation for the board to consider uh, issuing a letter of award. Um, it's exciting. I, I think it does meet um, my office's original intentions. Or, or sort of like aspirations for what the property could be reused as, although that being said, we're open for anything. The R P was not restrictive. Um, it had guidelines were based on the, the, the town's media development principles and the master plan. And, and I, I'm, I'm, I'm very confident in the recommendation that the work group has um, through my office to the board. Uh, to, to move to the next step with this particular vendor. And I don't know if anyone else wants to add anything or have questions from board, but.
Um, just to bring it from the um, group that evaluated, do you have anything to add?
Um. I, I was very impressed with the process. Um, I came in pretty late because the, the process, a lot of it had been uh, lucky enough to be part of the evaluation. Um, looking at the proposal, what they want to do. Um, even just the small little details of the property, if this is, if this is what they're going to make this um. That property look like, it really does feel like it could be almost like a showcase. Um, you know, it, it's something that Maynard can be proud to see downtown. Um. You know, I mean, they, they talk about engaging with the schools with, you know, an art project and. Um, you know, having a community space possibly for the signage of, you know, upfront and things like that. So. It really did speak to, I think, what um. What the, what we thought would be the best um, the best choice for, for Maynard.
And it is a highly visible place.
Very high. If you'd like to ask, you can ask God to do it.
Well, I will, man. If you have anything.
First, well.
Who's also. Uh, on, on the uh, group who prepared the R F P and uh, did the evaluation. God, do you have anything you would like to add?
It looks really good. I think they're going to be a great partner, you know, Greg's taking the lead on this and Megan. Did a lot of that, I haven't looked in on the R P and all kind of great uh, contributors, a great, a really good team. And um, very happy with herself, uh, O'Brien, you know, really um. Got the word out, put a lot of follow-up, you know, to make sure that we had some. You know, um, interest beyond, you know, our local neighborhood in Maynard. So I think the process. You should all be proud of that.
I think the other thing that's, you know. One thing that I know that I need to remember, um, and you know, is important to remember is that this space, you know. If it's renovated, renovated to look like this, to do this, it increases the value of the property. Which then helps increase the whole overall value of the real estate in town. Um, and that's something that we don't really think of when we're just doing these, you know. Individual um, sales. So um, I think that's the goal is, is to really increase the property value. Um, and I think that's, I think this is a really good opportunity.
How many um, units are they anticipating uh, for the residential?
I think it's a three or four.
Three or four.
I was wondering if they couldn't get the density bonus too, because they're downtown. That would, you know, maybe not to.
Well, I'm picking an affordable unit.
Right, so they get up to.
Five or six.
Yeah, we get it unfortunately. Um.
Good question. I don't know. I, I, I showed this to uh, the finding director, who was excited about it, but we didn't get into detail about. About what.
Maybe. Five thousand thirty-nine.
I, I don't.
So, so for that, I think he's five. I don't know, it depends what they do upstairs. Wanted to go down here and.
It's also the, I don't know if that, uh, because they need the elevator. So I don't know if the whole camera kind of for the square footage.
Right, that tower. Yeah, right, yeah.
Any other questions for, for anybody who's involved with the process?
I, I have a question. What, what is the actual sale price?
There was no actual sale price. So, so the R F P allows you to accept two separate proposal submissions. The price proposal and a non-price proposal and um, procurement guy for the state says you're supposed to. First, look at non-price proposals and see if it matches whatever your expectations uh, to get out of, 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 so it's kind of like the non-monetary value. Um, which is the key, you know, principles, master plan, and that's in the neighborhood. And then, then separately is the price proposal. Now admittedly, this price proposal is fifty thousand dollars, which. Absolutely could be considered a low, low amount. However, there's a significant investment required for the reuse of property, maintenance in particular. So I had an old quote for a little less than a hundred fifty thousand dollars just to evade the property. Uh, I'm, I'm referring to asbestos in the property. And then um, then this, this uh, this proposal is taking on that cost as well as. Uh, there's, there's a lot of stuff is still in the, in the building. It's not, the building itself has a lot in it. And we've been trying to clean it up, but there's, there's a lot in there. So.
I'm gonna, I, I'm asking specifically because if we look at the total value, land value, building value and um, you know, this goes into. A, you know, it's gonna end up, it's a, it's a public record, it's a public document, all that. And, and there's gonna be several of us in this room that are gonna have to explain to many, many people. Why we accepted this dollar. And I'm just trying to get a deal for when those questions come, because invariably, well, what, what are the answers to that question?
So I, I, that's just, I agree.
I don't say I asked those questions in there.
I know you did. What can you do? Whatever, I didn't. So I did ask the chief assessor for his, for his, like, what he thinks of the, his perspective. It is difficult to say because he did look at this, at this pretty quick proposal, um, but he only had it based on. As a comparison point, what he currently has, which is the fire station versus what this potential reuse could be, which is a mixed use with, with um, with residential. So it's, it's not apples to apples. Um. But there will be taxes and I, and there will be, there will be new revenue to the town. And a long-term. Good use, I believe, a good, a good use for the, for the neighborhood. And especially in comparison to the other two proposals, because I think that's a key aspect. The other two proposals were not as. I don't think they were as um. They were, they, they just weren't as attractive. I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be kind of fair to them, but they, I don't think they were as attractive and as well thought out as this proposal was. Oh, uh, one of, I won't, I, I don't even want to kind of bring up what, what they were going to propose as prices, but I don't think it would be the long-term investment return that we would get from this proposal.
And that's, and that's up there. And I, so, so if, if, if you look at that and you take a hundred forty-seven, a fifty, the price goes up to two hundred, you're saying that you're right.
Just right up the bat.
Right up the bat. But if, but I think, I think. For the benefit of many people who are going to ask the question, you know, what are some of the other things you alluded to that the. Buyer, post buyer, right, or developer will have to spend, oh yeah. That we would otherwise had to have spent to clean out the building to other things. Cause I think that's important to what that overall value is because. People are gonna, I see you sold a eight hundred and seven thousand dollar piece of property for X. You know, and I, and. We understand that there's going to be tax government, you know, and it's going to be a, a, a new sense of um. You know, um, community in, insofar as, you know, um, the value of that property, the, the, the looks, the aesthetics, the whole my eyes, but I think it's important that we have. Answers to that question at some point, because that question is going to come. It's a fair question for anybody that.
I, I don't disagree. Then I, I just would like to be able to, yeah, you know, whether we get an estimate of that or whether they provide us at some point what the real number becomes or.
At some point down the road, if you have, that we have the fifty, the one forty-seven. And these are costs the town of Maynard would have to have borne. Had we kept the billing and done it ourselves, I think. So that, so that there's a total value paid to the town of Maynard. That looks something that others might find more palatable than two hundred thousand dollars. Okay, I think I get it.
Um, you done?
I'm done.
I don't mean it in the way that.
I, she, she's, I'm catching it.
Um. What type of, and again, this question is not meant to be inflammatory in a way, but what type of protection does the town have regarding a bait and switch?
No, it's strong protections because the R P is now a legal document. So once the, if the letter of award is, is authorized, then we move into negotiations. However, the person sale from town council was attached to the R P. So there's not meant to be a lot of deviation from that. There might, there's always that one of the details when it comes to, to the negotiation, but. Um, and particularly person sale agreement, just because it's complex, but. Um, the R P is an attachment, is an exhibit to, to the, to the contract, to the person sale agreement. So they're supposed to abide by. The conditions in terms of days of it. Um, and so they, and otherwise they, they break their contract.
And that requires them to have the mixed use aspect that requires them to have the. Uh, and then is there any period of time in which that's required to exist?
Um.
If they, they went, well, it's, it's not producing like our business in Connecticut did, so we're going to get rid of it. Now incomes. Whatever.
Yeah, I'd have to check what protections our person sale agreement has towards the, that's, that would be, generally contracts require um, both parties to reach the changes. And so I, I suspect that would be the case. Um. But I'm, I'm, I, I mean, I have a certain amount of confidence. I have to, the, the gentleman who's representing this proposal team and, and I, I have certain amount of confidence. Uh, just based on your proposal and his demeanor. But you're totally right, we should protect the town and I believe the person sale agreement will do that. But inevitably, this is a great wonder rendered, but like as soon as they, they start, you know, actually designing and doing renovations, I'm like. Like any home improvement show you see on T V, something always comes up. So there will probably be some sort of like deviation along the way, but I. But I'm, but we have to at least keep them to this original concept of the mixed use and residential's. Um, and there's, there's not a lot of restrictions on the property. It's just, it's just a matter of. If being able to reuse the property, which is a bait and a no.
And then my last comment would be, would this require any type of zoning change?
Uh, I don't think so. In the, in the, in the warrant last night, it was both an authorization to sell a property as well as. To, to allow the property to be zoned. I can't remember what the article, what the motion exactly was. Um, but we did ask that question and yeah, I think they even make allusion to it in, in um. In this, otherwise it, it, it requires like a specific plan, but I, I don't think it would be unacceptable. Like I said, bill names are, seem to be like excited about this.
Oh, uh, I'd be excited. I'd be, I'm excited about it too. I'm just worried about the what ifs, you know, the.
I'll keep the board informed as, if, if we go so far as getting into negotiations, I'm, I'm sure all of you kind of know the board about. I was going to shake that.
The other thing about the, the business is that they actually do have properties. I don't know if you, if you've seen this part, David, but they do have properties here um, in Massachusetts. They have property in Waltam. So it, it's not, um, you know, I think sometimes, especially where we're not used to having a lot of out-of-state companies. Have interest in us or in town or, or whatever. Um, it's definitely easy to. Make, want to make sure that all your Ts are crossed, all your Is are dotted a hundred percent. Um, but it is more of, um. You know, it does seem like they have several properties. They do have some, they do have at least one in Massachusetts. Um, and they're just. They decided that Maynard would be a cool place to. To hang their, hang their shingle.
And I see in the rendering that the um. The old, like, the horse trough is there. Is that going to stay?
That was actually, I think that was in the R P. I just saw that in the R P that um.
The R P today.
In front of the building, um. Yeah, and they did, they pulled it out too. Yeah. So they want to, they're gonna, they want it to stay.
They want it to stay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Let me comment about the price. Um, I think.
You may.
Uh. O'Brien did some rough calculations, kind of on the elevator and the, the mediation. They were talking. I'm going to be done with them. They're gonna have to invest in it and get it going. So it seemed like a good and a hard.
Yeah, I, I can chime in on that if you can hear me. This is Luke from O'Brien.
Go ahead.
For, yeah, for a building that I think most buyers or investors would need to take care of. Um, so you have the asbestos abatement of a hundred forty-four thousand. Um, just about any user there is going to need to install a sprinkler. Um, rough quote for that would be somewhere a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand. Um, the roof is. Out of um. It's useful life. So that's probably another eighty to a hundred thousand. Um, possibly an elevator installation, which could be a hundred thousand and um, refer something. Each back system, energy codes and efficiency of windows. Um, and a, a few other items as well. So we would expect any, any buyer here to. Um, have a cost of at least five hundred thousand before they even start to redevelop the property.
One of the questions that I had asked, um, was, you know, again, we had, I think thirty some odd um, proposals were pulled. And then we, we got three. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, why didn't we get more there? Is there, um. You know, is it something that could have been done differently or, or whatever? And, and basically. Part of it is the fact that um, it is, as was quoted, a funky property. Um, and it's just, it. And so, you know, if the cost of the asbestos isn't going to sway you, then it could be the cost of having to install the sprinkler system. Or it could be the cost of the elevator, or it could be the cost of all three together. So. It is going to be a very particular business. Model that is going to decide if they want to take this and do it. Um, so it's not like you're going to have fifty people that, fifty businesses that say this is a great idea. You're going to have fifty businesses and say that's a great idea. But who can actually execute it? And so that's, I think, where we have come to is this, we believe this. Business is the most likely to execute um, for us.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you.
David? No. All right.
And so.
There is a motion.
It is moved to authorize the letter of award to be provided to Blackrock Galleries O L C twenty-nine, two ninety Pope Road, Fairfield, Connecticut. Zero six eight two four. As the proposer found to have submitted the most advantageous proposal. It will consideration all of the evaluation criteria set forth in the I R P, F R F P.
Thank you.
All in favor? All right. Well, thank you to everyone on the evaluation committee, uh, and to, um, yes. All right, well, thank you to everyone on the evaluation committee, uh, and to, um, yes, yeah, great work.
Thanks, Luke, thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Brian, yes. All right, moving on to item eleven, which is an update on the Green Meadow School Building Project.
Um, we have not had a meeting since our last meeting, you know, we will have our next meeting in the night before our next meeting. If that's June sixth.
Yeah, the, their, the voting committee is working on a survey. To send out, um, just to get a little more community input about some of the, some items, I don't wanna get too far down the road, it's serious, I believe. But, um, there's, that's one thing to be looking for too. I also, I personally will be participating, I was looking through my T A report, I don't remember what it's called. But I, I'll participate in a meeting with the MSBA to go over this mission and, 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 uh. Um, conference with the MSBA to talk about the budget where we are.
When will that be?
I think it's this Thursday. I had to, it's in my T A report, I lost it, it was my committee minutes, but it's coming up.
When do they plan to make a decision on the H back?
Uh, that I'm not sure, do you know, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't, I don't know. I think, I think this. I would think that that would be part of the survey, part of that, that, that conversation, and they also, um. In discussion, the, the last, the meeting prior to the last update was, um. There was some discussion of some of that commentary. So they, they have some, they have a lot of feedback, they have a lot of information, I don't know. Exactly when that, that, they, you know, set to be made.
It'll probably be, so, so I'm just agreeing, I'm, I, I'm in, I'm expected, I am expecting to attend this project's full budget transition meeting. With the MSBA on this Thursday. Um, and so I'll let you know if it's something that is definitive, um, my, my suspicion is. Uh, or my assumption is, you know, through the results of that community forum, perhaps through this survey as well. I bet the chair will probably wanna kind of take a little more solid, solid direction out of those things soon, but I can't be groomed, but. That's my expectation.
Maybe I, or I think that they, to the point that was made several times last night, they're still. Talking about different, um. Locations, decided potential, you know, boring, feel a little, that type of thing, so.
Right.
There's a lot of that type of discussion still going behind the scene.
And I suspect that will continue, just, I mean, this is a vast project, it will, it will probably be, I mean, as, as much as the fine tuning of details. Uh, will happen for the design. It, it's hard to say until everything's finished.
Any questions on the Green Meadow School Building Project? All right, we will move on to item twelve, which is a review of annual town meeting from last night, I believe the, um. The town moderators, um. Kind of post action section review, figure out what we can do to help town meeting run better and more efficiently, um, is scheduled for next week. So I think what we're really seeking is just input from the board on. Uh, obviously, with some of the microphone and speaker issue that we know to work out, but, um, if there are other suggestions for what worked or what did not that we could. Bring back to the town moderator. Is, is there anything else you wanted to cover, Craig, on the?
Oh, no, that was, that was particularly, I think, they're saying, I think it is in sweet, so if y'all have anything you want me to convey or, or just to attend.
Right, I mean, I, I, I thought, aside from the, the, the issues of Jeff's management. Found in, in that type of stuff, was it, that the first time it's ever happened?
Yeah.
And we reached that goal for every, almost every time meeting that I've been on the board, and that's, you know, the. Sixteen, eighteen type meeting, that's the first time I've.
No, I will say that there was, um, someone different writing it, so I, I'm not saying, I'm not. So it could just be working out the kinks.
Oh, that I.
Getting to, you know, figuring out, you know, figuring out the, the difference in sound system, I think it's a lot. Um, I think he's fairly new, so it's a lot to figure out in a week.
I think they had different equipment too.
Yeah, also, also.
I didn't recognize those speakers.
I know that, as I was, when I, prior to the meeting starting, I was on the other side of the, the, the podium with, um. The school committee and the finance committee, and they greatly appreciated the fact that they had a TV bathing them. As the we, with the, the screen to look at, because we hadn't had that before, so.
Oh, yeah.
We were, we were coming through papers, and now, last night didn't happen, we just saw, we saw this thing, screen everybody else was seeing.
Yeah.
In front of us, I, I think it might have been helpful if it was raised up a little bit. It was definitely an improvement.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You're, you're right, so Mr. Valenti, um, was taking over for Mr. Navia. Um, I just, I just don't remember there, was there speakers in the back before?
No, I don't think there was.
I think they've used different, they used different equipment.
Yeah, and, and then there was a second room, which Andy was, was, uh, was compared to those.
I, I think, so it was complicated. I think in the past, we didn't have speakers in the back, I think in the past, there might have been speakers along the outer wall, like.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Down to the front, and then halfway down a pair, kind of on the outer wall.
It seems like the equipment in the, in the building has changed, which just didn't seem we.
I mean, but it, it was.
Obviously, I got it very well.
Yeah.
I mean, there, well, the, the balance and stuff, it was a little confusing, okay, like.
Yeah, that I don't remember happening before.
Like a whole group of people put the wrong thing in.
So Dick was very thorough in his after actions, like he, he, that's how he is. Uh, so I suspect everything you're saying, he's already, well, he is already well aware of.
He didn't sleep last night, there's no waking stuff last night with two, two run of a battle skin pull out and whatnot.
He's his own critic.
Which is fine, yeah, yeah. But it was like, other than the, 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 those.
Yeah, I, I think so too, I think, I think the presenters very well, and, and I, and I think it was relatively civil and, and I.
It was one of the more civil ones we've had, you know, sometimes. Right, so the outdoor ones have all been just, there's no anything, but indoors, indoors, we usually have a little. Those, some little spit bath back and forth, but there was none of those, really.
One thing I'm not a fan of, um, and you know, it's his meeting, he can run it out, that is how he sees it. I do not like talking about two articles at the same time to vote separately, et cetera. Um, I just don't think it's, I think it can be confusing to the voters, I think it can be, uh. You know, mix and match, I really didn't think it was appropriate to do that, um. Last night in particular, with the, there were three articles that he threw together that were really important, the budget. The schools, the ju- uh, amendment, and then he, he allowed them to discuss it along with the free cash article. Which I thought was completely out of bounds.
By the way, that was already resolved. The free chat was already done, so why call it back in?
Yeah, it, it just, to me, it, I, I think it should be article by article, I don't like the mixing, I don't like what we did with COVID. I, I understand why we did it with COVID, when he would say, okay, if you wanna vote for all of these, vote now, because. Each one should have its own independent.
I don't remember.
Might take longer, or might take.
Those warrants, I don't think, had the same level of proficiency, like, I don't think, I don't recall, I might be mistaken, but I remember, like, some of those articles being like. One article, and then the, the one right after, what might have amended the one before, like, I don't.
You mean the ones for COVID, during COVID?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, it was, it was.
Some of our, some of our consent agenda items that we do make perfect sense, and, and it just. Could be done that way, it's, you know, like the, the charter items, things like that, I, I get it, but when you, I mean, I guess, when he said, when he said it, I sent him this. Um, up there, I said. They, they're going against each other, six to seven are, are, they're not complementary, they're, they're kind of, you know, they're conflicting. To have them share the stage, I, I, I view David, I thought that was wrong, I didn't think it was, I don't think it was fair to, to. Either people opposed to or for that, that particular article. I think, I don't think it was good for any of the people that had a vested interest in either, to have them discussed at the same time. Because I don't think everybody sitting down in the chairs and the seats below us, starting to read. I think a lot of people were kind of, there's some confusion over exactly what are we voting, what, which what?
Yeah, what, and I agree, I mean, I, I think in many ways, we have to remember, as, as leaders, we've been to, you know. Fifty town meetings and similar type approaches. Many people that are arriving in the audience, uh, they're there for the first time, for the first time in a long time.
Sure.
And you gotta make it simple, it can't be in any way mixed up, confused, or whatever. And even announcing, even confusion on, and, and I'm not blaming Dick. But even confusion on, well, it was a two thirds, no, you need a majority, it needs to be consistent, it needs to be. Uh, as they say in my office, I mean, it's gotta be, it's gotta be clean.
That, and once there was a, a vote listed as secret that he took as open, about two thirds of the way through the agenda, which, again. Concept of that, yeah.
Uh, so, I, you know, I, I think those are things that are, they're just in-house, housekeeping type things, but, um.
No, those, that's actually significant, because.
Things can make, it can make.
Yeah.
Because what I want, when we leave town meeting, and I'm sure Dick wants the same thing, as the moderator. When people leave, they feel, they learned a lot about what's going on in the town, and they felt they could participate without any problem. And they understood what was going on, and if those things are all achievable at the end of a meeting, you've had a good meeting. If you have people going out saying, geez, I wasn't sure, and that really confused me then, you, you, you've not, you've left some openings, and I think. I think we can improve and learn from it, and, uh.
I think housekeeping is like a balance, but like, when it comes to the content of the meeting, whether it be through the warrant. How far presentation, we put on, like, we try to put everything online, like, we want, we want people to feel like they're important. Like, it, they don't have to agree, but at least they understand what's being asked of them. And, and, and I'm, I'm, I, my suspicion is Dick, um, being as sort of like thorough and critical as he is. He, he probably is very aware of this, this same provision. Um, I just don't know what you could really expect it, I don't know if he thought it was gonna be clear debate, if you will, between the two. Um, but ob- obviously.
And, and those ones in particular, I just think they should have been independently spoken to, and. You know, now that we've just achieved this, now we move on to this, do you want to adjust the general budget, meet this? People have a better understanding of what's happening, rather than having it all talked about. And somebody saying we can have overrides, and we can have this, and we can have that, and it's, it's not even on the table, not even part of the. And discussion.
On the, um, the fossil fuel for the schools, I think the word non-binding needed to be made very clear to the audience. Uh, instead of after a couple of comments, because I think that would have, that, that there was some confusion around that one, so when a. Especially when we have a citizen petition that ends up being non-binding, just making sure that's clear. The other thing on article four, I think, I think we should have a quick pause, just to do, just to add up the numbers. And make sure free cash, just to make sure the numbers were correct, and I think, asking the moderator for a pause, just to make sure we're clear on that. And then I know for us, you know, there were a few numbers that they've been touched, that would have been more like so nice, if we can't pay for those, that would have been a much bigger problem than. The allocation there, um, the other thing I think. We should have done as a select board is just procedurally, since we came out against the amendment. Uh, I think we should have taken a pause and said to town meeting that we do approve patent in the final article, because even though that wasn't our allocation.
Yeah.
I definitely would prefer that allocation to no allocation whatsoever, or we need another town meeting, so I mean, obviously I voted yes. Once amended, just because I want the money to be allocated, it's sitting in a, on there, so I hope that, you know, I. If, if that had been a no vote, because we didn't make that, that would have been the challenge, but luckily, we do have a free cash allocation. Any other items? Um, there was a lot of confusion around whether not babysitting was available beforehand, so I don't know if we can up the messaging.
I, I agree, yeah, just didn't get confirmation at the last.
Yeah, I.
Um, I'll try better, I don't, I, yeah, 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 yeah. I have, I have weeks ahead and, and then, anyway, I, point taken, I, I don't like, I don't like. Ambiguities, I don't like unclarity, there, there is, or there isn't, we should know well, I fully agree. Yeah.
I did like their, um, the tables that were put out, out in the lobby, I think were, uh. Were effective with, you know, sign up, I don't know if anybody did sign up, but at least it was there and visible. Um, those types of making things public and available are helpful. Uh, yeah.
Go ahead, I said the baby thing for a second, um, and I have to, I, I'll look more into it. Um, but one of the things that, uh, I noticed that the town is still. Is starting, is that they had, they had their meeting during the day on Saturday, and they offered what. We would probably call babysitting, but what it was is kids' town meeting. So it's like, it, you know, so it basically. I, I, I'm assuming it's a lot of activities for kids and whatever, and it kind of, you know, it's not just the kids, it, it's them taking part in their own.
I, I can ask.
Thing, so, yeah, so it just kind of, I, it's, it struck me as, you know, I mean, you could, I believe the schools now have that. Um, you know, eighth grade now has the civics requirement, so maybe that's something that. Can partner with, you know, the schools, and they can, you know, they can help with that, and that could help. You know, meet their civic requirement or something, you know, so, um, I thought that was an interesting.
Uh, interestingly, Acton just passed municipal voting for, um. Um, individual for sixteen and older, which I thought was interesting, um. On the, on the, uh, issue of civic education.
Sixteen year olds go to town, because I don't know if I would.
No, they actually, they got the first two, they got the first two, um, classes off.
All right.
Uh, so, unless there's anything else, I can be this.
Anything else? I'll open this one up, any comments, I think we're, we're open to feedback on, yeah.
Uh, I'd like to, uh, prevent that. Um, just on, on the review from, from last night, one of the things that I'm, I'm really big on is clarity of information, I think. Um, I only feel moderately confident that, um, a significant number of people really truly understand. A lot of mathematics was being presented. Um, so I, I was certainly pushing for others on, on very. And as one kind of subset of that, my question is, when the old and big numbers are being presented? Uh, I understand legally, of course, we need to study that command of the dog. But when it comes to the presentation, is there a way that we round up to, for example, a near thousand? And I say that because the, uh, in terms of prospecting, information, and numbers. For the sake of clarity, if that alone can be simplified, um, I, I think it would be helpful.
Well, we will see, see you on a lot of next year's annual town meeting documentation, and we're completely open to input for, for increased presentation. I think one thing we didn't discuss last time, between last time meeting and this one, was that presentation format that we give. Um, and so I, I think we have made some improvements, but I think we're absolutely open to more along those lines, so. Um, we're looking forward to, to.
Yeah, it's tweaked every time.
Yeah. Okay, great, any other comments or feedback?
I would, I would also commend, um, planning board, Chris did a great job with this. And remember, we talked about how difficult it is to present zoning articles at town meeting, let alone at eleven thirty at night. Um, and I thought he did a really good job with it, and, um, was, uh. And I think he did a great job, likewise, I want to commend. Regardless of what the issues are, but the citizens petition and the way it was presented, and the respect that I thought. That he showed to either of those who spoke against him, um, and spoke out negatively toward what he was opposing. Um, I thought he was really, really good, and I think he was a good model for future. Uh, citizens petitions coming forward, and not necessarily having an adversarial, um, you know. Angry approach, looking back at some of the other citizens petitions that we've seen in the past, and the way they've been presented. And the language that's used, and the way people are spoken to, and the way that people on the floor speak to the people on the, the. The, the, on the stage, I think one plays off the other. So if the person on the stage is being respectful and kind to the people that are speaking to them. The people speaking back are going to be likewise, and otherwise, the person who does the opposite is going to stand out as the jerk. And nobody wants to be the jerk, so the more respect each side can have for one another. The more, uh, the better town meeting runs, and the better the, uh, the debate and the discussion.
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's him, or, or, or the subject matter that made it the way you said it was, because I, I agree. That it was, it, it, you know, from any, whether you agreed with what he wanted or not, it went well, and it was well presented, and he had the information. Went back and forth a couple of times, and, you know, went back a couple of slides and brought up, you know, to answer people's questions. He was well prepared, and I think at other times, we've had people that just came in with a citizen petition, citizen petition. That they were just angry about something, and they, they, you know, there was just a lot of anger coming out of the petition itself. Where, where his was not that at all, I thought, I thought his, I agree, I thought his, his presentation and everything that he had to say was, um. You know, spot on, and, and just, I think that's, I think. I think that's, I think that paid, played a big part into why he was acceptable. Just because anybody that asked a question, and even if they didn't agree with him, he had a, you know, composed answer and, you know, it just went well. And I don't know that everybody that gets up there has the, um, you know, they have their personal opinion or their idea, but he was prepared to answer everyone's questions and respond to anyone's ideas, which would have been better.
I, I, I think actually on what impressed me most about that was on the second one, when Bill Coleman spoke up and it was very clear that he had done his homework and, and this was not something that was put in last minute. He'd been working on that particular.
The only, the only thing I would say about his petition that I, you know, I don't, I don't find fault with it, but he's giving it to us. Like, his petition is directed to come to us. The results of his, the results of his warrant article are coming to the four of us, the five of us in a month, right? The, like, it's.
Which one?
The, the one.
The first, the non-binding.
Non-binding. Because it's, it's coming to, is a, is a recommendation to us. And as we found out over the last couple of months, we are not the body that's going to make that decision. It should have been directed to the, the school building committee. You know what I'm saying? Like his, well, I mean, we will forward it to them. I get that, but I'm just saying if, in, in, if you, if you were someone on the school building committee that wanted to be cute at some point, you could always play the game that, well, we didn't get that. That went to the select one, not to us. You know what I'm saying? Like, it just, the, the article called for the information or the, the support of his idea and his thoughts to be presented to us for our benefit and for, for us to use, where it should have gone to the school building committee, because they're going to make the ultimate decision. And I don't know if, much like we were under the impression that we were going to have a, a, a part in that decision, he thought the same thing, because he's been on every call, every, he's been on every meeting of the school building committee. Um, so, so he may have had the same impression that some of us had at one time, that we would have a vote and a say in whether or not it's a, you know, fossil fuel system or not. So I just, it's not a problem because the five of us will just forward that along, because we'll build a committee once, once it's been approved in, in an official. But it just, it just, to me, it's, it kind of leaves a, it leaves a space for some people to kind of question, you know, what they have to do with the information, whether they have to recognize the information or not. And that's, that would be, it would be problematic for a lot of people if that was the way it was accepted, but it's just, it's just worrying. But you, as we know, when people start to read these things, a lot of people get caught up in the wording. They call Dick wasn't here. You know, for that, some of the wording of some of the articles, it's just, the words matter and his words were, were pointing in a, in a certain direction. Just add article number seven. Had they not used the, the funding source that they used, decided the funding source that they decided to use, it would have been, uh, um, uh, a majority vote. Show of hands. It would not have been a super ballot, you know, two thirds majority.
Um, I, I actually thought the, the stronger thing came on the next one where Fincom and ourselves recommended against and town meeting approved it anyway, that, that's a, a sign that these issues are.
Stretch code.
The stretch code, you're right. That these issues are strongly favored by a, a significant subject, um, fraction of the town or town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, that, that was, that was interesting to me.
It, it's kind of interesting. I, I, I thought about that one a lot after the fact. And, and, you know, today, and as I'm thinking about it, it's kind of, I think a lot of things that we, we've handled in this room in the last couple of years that, you know, some of us individually might not like them, but they're just things that are going to happen and things that are going to come. Because they're the right things. Like, a lot of people, you know, I'm not going to stand in this room and say, oh, it's my moral, my moral responsibility to convince that or the other. That's no one's business. What my moral, my moral responsibilities are. But it, it's, it's those things that come. And anybody that sits in this room or any other room like it and wants to put their head in the sand and pretend that things like stretch codes, things like, you know, green initiatives aren't going to, aren't important, aren't coming, or, you know, um, Indigenous Peoples' Day, those type of things are coming. That's, that's the world we live in. So it's, I, I was, I, I mean, I, I wasn't in favor of it for some, you know, for some issues more around, I don't like anybody telling me what I have to do, rather than thinking that it was the right thing to do. I mean, you know, I'm going to tell, someone's going to come in here and tell me that I'm having a gas boiler put in, but I have to put in five hundred feet of electric cable to, um, be, be ready in case someone tells me I have to go electric. Like, it, it, to me, it's, it's on that level. It's not on the level of, I shouldn't be prepared to go electric because I should at some point. But it's just, you know, the, the wording type of thing. But I, I thought that, I think those things are coming and that, you know.
The Green Meadows School did design to meet the stretch energy code and address, right? I think that was marked, took the plan for this possibility.
And they, and they did that, they did that early. That was done early and early in, in the school building process. They, they voted that, you know, they would adopt the stretch code, you know, rules, I guess, but yeah, same.
But, um, the opt-in stretch.
The opt-in.
Yes.
The optimal, yeah, yeah.
To be prepared for the option.
But it was, it was, um, I thought he did a great job. And I was prepared not to like that. I was prepared not to like the presentation, just in all, you're always prepared not to like the presentation. And it's terrifying, it's just perception, is that, eh, during this, during some of our meetings of the school building committee, he, he was going off, like he would, you know, Roger was, he was, he was doing his thing and it was, it was, you know, extending meetings by thirty or forty minutes and he was relentless in some of the things that he was kind of grabbing on to, to, to make his point. And last night, to his credit, he, he stayed away from those things. He just focused on what it has to be. And that, I think that played into his favor tremendously. And, and it's, you know, congratulations to him for, you know, the, the hard work he did and, and the fact that he got those to pass, because citizens petitions are not something to pass very often in this town. All right.
Any other feedback on town meeting?
Glad, I'm glad it was one night, because we would not have had a forum.
I, I was, uh, I was doubting Dick's decision, but the, it went through.
I, I set up a dick in a way, I said, I can't imagine we would have had a forum tonight to finish. Given, given that the only two, the only three or four articles left were, you know, planning and zoning type of things, I don't think we would have had a forum tonight. I'm glad we, I'm glad we finished last night.
All right. Any other items? All right. Moving on to end thirteen, we have several correspondence. I'm not going to count. Any comments on any of the correspondence? All right. Uh, I'll accept the motion.
I'm going to accept it for correspondence, A through I, as shown.
All in favor? And we have uh, one.
What's that?
Minutes.
Sorry about that. All right. Need to accept and approve the meeting minutes of April twenty fifth, twenty twenty-three.
All in favor? Uh, Town and Minister Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, I want to publicly commend Greg Wilson for a number of things. Um, he's, he's trying to keep up with the minutes. Uh, but he's done a fantastic job with, um, the warrants, the town report, the website. Many, many businesses asked him a lot of questions about liquor licenses and commercial licenses and licenses. And then last night, he, I trust him, he did, he did a fantastic job in about ten seconds, it felt like being handed what an amendment was going to be to an article and typing up very quickly to be shown on the screen in a way that we could follow. And great job, Greg. Thank you. Uh, yeah, he makes a lot of his work. Um, so thank you so much. Um, some other, some other things. Um, next Thursday, uh, the twenty-fifth is the M A P C's, that's Metropolitan Area Planning and Legislative Practice, which is excitingly going to be hosted at the same jury. We, I think we did it last year. Right? Which is very cool. Um, that's where delegates come and a lot of, um, um, you know, like, uh, V I Ps, if you will, come from the region and, and the state, uh, uh, hosted by the M A P C, but it's great, it's great that it's me. And then, um, town halls will be closed for Memorial Day, uh, which is May twenty-ninth and Juneteenth, which is June nineteenth. Um, I will be attending a Massachusetts Managers Association, uh, on June first and second, so I'll be, I'll be there for those days. Um, I just want to give public commendation to our Human Resources Manager, Stephanie Duggan, for hosting the Benefits Fair at the Fowler School um, last week. And it was, it was great. She had vendors, uh, from the community out. She had massage chairs out, she had, um, it was just fantastic. So, uh, we, I, I can't remember how many employees both from the town and from the school department came by, but it was also at the Fowler School. It was meant to be really accessible and she did fantastic job. Um, I also want to commend the volunteers of the Conservation Commission for helping out with length, length of wood fiber ground cover at the Rio Road. I haven't been out there to see it in person, but I, I saw the pictures that it uploaded to town, town and municipal board. I was grateful that they did that. And, um, I also want to point out, um, a fantastic job that Bill Noser did in securing a forty-five thousand dollars uh, M A P C Technical Assistance Grant to help the sixty-one Summer Street Reuse Committee. Um, and, and their support of their charts to, to provide options to, to the, uh, select board. Uh, it's a good, that's, that'll be really helpful, uh, to that. I think I'm really very much impressed with what the committee is already doing and, and the productivity and their deliberation. Um, and this will just sort of like, uh, you know, further support that and give some resources to that, to that work. I'm giving some ideas and some technical, some technical support. And I think that's it, unless there's questions for our board.
Any questions on the Town and Minister Report? All right. Uh, Chair Report. Um, a couple of weekends ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Nobel Dedication at the library. Um, Ellen Duggan, um, gave a great overview of the history of the bell and process uh, it took to get it to its current location today. It was well attended. Representative Hogan was there and, and had a citation from the state. So my, my thanks to the Crystal Sandberg and Ellen Duggan and Historic Mission and Paul Boothroyd and everybody who's involved in that process, a much longer list of names than, than just that. And that was, that was well intended at the library. Uh, and then later that evening, which was perfect weather, was the art walk downtown. And it was, I think, um, that was the first important weekend we've had in a while. The moods were certainly elevated and a good job by the major business alliance on, on having a, a, a fun event for everybody involved there. Uh, and then last weekend, just a few days ago, I attended, um, the, the Green Advisory Council hosted by Senator Eldridge, uh, which was just up in Acton. And so, um, you know, uh, talking a lot about a lot of the issues. Um, there was actually a presentation more about some of the work at the federal level in terms of climate modeling and then what's coming. Uh, and what some of the more and less effective policy solutions among the ones that are out there. So that was very interesting. It happened to be from, um, uh, Director of the Sloan Institute of M I T, uh, giving that particular presentation, but also good to hear from, um, uh, other board members, um, sustainability directors, uh, and other, um, people involved in municipal effort from uh, uh, oh, very wide radius, uh, around the area. Uh, that is it for the Chair Report. And then of course, thanks, uh, to everybody who, um, pulled together Town Meeting that side. Uh, Board Member Report, Chris.
No more. Congratulations to the other great for all the work he put into the town meeting as well.
I'm the guy.
Behind the curtain, odds. I did speak more than I ever. You did, yeah. But, but, but thanks. I'm just, I, I thank you and to everybody and all of them did, did a part. It's always, it's always done. You know, when it's over, it's always good to look back and see all the, um, efforts so many people put into it, including, you know, Dick and his tires work on it and everything. But just, a lot of work goes into it, a lot more than people think that, uh, we show up for four or five hours on a, on a Monday night once a year and it, it's really a lot more that goes into it. It's, it's pretty cool. And it's just, thanks to everybody that took part in. And our deputy moderator too, right, right here with us, you know? That's it. Thanks.
Uh, I don't think I have anything other than I wanted to comment on the, so I also attended the Bell Dedication, uh, the Bell Ceremony. Uh, and it was fun to watch them honor Paul Boothroyd for her, for his uh, contributions to the Historic Mission. Um, and it was, it was, it was nice to see that as well. I think he, it was unexpected, but it was, it was a fun moment. Um, but yeah, thank you to everybody who, who made that happen. It's, um, amazing to have that kind of history that's still here and still, we all know about it. And I, I really appreciate that.
When, when I talked to Paul at the event, he had something to say. And he said, Jeff, there's another bell I want. To describe that. So we'll see more maybe to come.
No.
All right. David.
Um, thank you. Um, yeah, hard to believe our next meeting is June sixth. And the reason I think that that's hard to believe is first off, we're going to have, before then, we'll have Memorial Day. Remember that we have our Memorial Day Parade um, on Memorial Day that we approved this evening. Uh, but more importantly, for the students of the class of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three at Mainland High School. Um, I think we should recognize the end of their high school career. Congratulate them, although graduation will be that, we meet on Tuesday, graduation will be that Friday. Um, uh, but I've been monitoring, they have an Instagram page that, um, existed last year and I guess it continues on, now going to become a tradition. Where they, uh, as each student announces where he or she has decided to move on to for the following year, they post along with their, um, you know, their major, if they're going to college or if they're going to the military or if they're going in the work world or whatever it happens to be. But to continually see the, um, the achievements of our students um, and where they are choosing to go to continue on with their education or with their lives or whatever is remarkable for a town like ours that does have a small budget that, yes, we compete and debate and discuss with the schools. Uh, but we, I think I speak on, on behalf of all of us, but we do recognize the strength of our school. And I think we need to continue to positively talk about our schools and not talk about what we don't have, but rather what we do have. And emphasize the fact that we have a damn good school system that produces wonderful students that go on to do great things. So congratulations to the class of twenty-three. And congratulations to the managed school department and the school system for another wonderful school year.
And I'll just note, we do have one meeting, we'll have the tri-board meeting, uh, on the thirtieth between now and our next select board only meeting on the day.
That is it?
All right. Great. All in favor? All right. Our next meeting will be on the day after Memorial Day, May thirtieth.